This evening, Al, I'm gonna let you kind of start off on introducing everyone and why we're here.
Sure, can you guys hear me okay? Alright, so a couple of years ago, or maybe even several years ago, Joel probably recalls best. Basically, we got into the discussion of the little sliver of land that the patio that's owned by the doctors, Dr. Sheriff and a couple of other group members, which Share resides in now for their restaurant. Their patio basically is sitting in village property. There was already a license agreement for that space. And we just thought it would be easier to not have to anytime they need to do anything to come back to the village board. They said, can we do this? And so we said, well, let's just sell them that sliver of land and transfer it over because there's nothing the village can do with it anyway. So that was kind of where the conversation started with that. And it kind of started dropped and then COVID came along and got dropped again. So we wanted to just kind of get everybody together so that way we can hopefully go forward with the transfer of this and what that looks like. So I've been working with Joel on this, on the transfer and what that looks like. So I think Joel has worked together with his building owners and the owners of More Pat. I see Howard is online as well. So because Matt's opinion was is while we're correcting this, we may as well also correct that which goes down into the Mill Plaza. So from that perspective, that's kind of where we are with this tonight. So we thought, let's all put our heads together. What does it take to make it happen?
So just before the meeting, I took a bunch of photographs. I get into Keaton here so we can pull it up so that we all have sort of a frame of reference of what we're talking about. I apologize for the snow. I wasn't able to shovel it before I took the pictures. Go back to the beginning of the series there. Oh, that's the one that we deleted.
Oh, this? Why isn't it?
I don't know. Here with a second.
At the beginning?
It's not up there.
It's not up there.
Oh, right, because I didn't hit the share button. Sorry about that.
First one's looking down from Main Street. There we go. Back up another one.
I might have deleted the wrong one.
Alright, well, you had, you had street view up, right?
Yeah.
I love street view. That's easy enough to see. The Share patio is pretty easy to understand. For our benefit, Keaton, can you just make that larger?
Oh, sorry. Yep. A lot going on, a lot of controls tonight.
Alright, so, so for everyone who doesn't know, the Spring Street right of way on the east side, which is the Share More Pat side, goes right up to the face of the building. And years and years ago, when that was carpet cultured, that patio was constructed, and it was constructed, as Al said, with a license agreement with the village to be built within the confines of a right of way. So the suggestion here is that we essentially move the property line to the face of the patio, the vertical face that you see there. And that will maintain everything from that face out to the street, which is the full width of the sidewalk that's there, plus all the planters and lighting and signage. So if you go to that next photograph that you got there. So what I did just, just tonight before we came over here is I took a bunch of photographs with a tape measure of where that line lands relative to all the buildings. So that you can visualize where it is relative to everyone's property. So.
You want the one with the bench?
The one with the bench. So right now, Share and More Pat are on a single property. Not that one, the other one. That's the bad one. That one. Okay, so it's hard to see, but you see the bench on the right? And you see that little black dot next to the bench?
Yeah.
That's the tape measure. That's where the line continues on and projects down towards the Mill property. So you see even the, the power pole and everything would still remain inside the public right of way. Next one. So the next photograph is off of the side of the Zen House. Now, again, it's hard to see. You see a little black dot just to the right of the walking path there. That again is that tape measure coming off the Zen House, and that would be the projection of that line. And if you follow that line straight up to the, actually into the depth of the patio, the deck on the Mill, that's where the Spring Street property line actually stops and then turns left. So go to the next one. What I was suggesting, now this is a little harder to see, but do you see the tape measure just to the, just near the bench? There's a little black dot right near the bench there. So that's 10 feet from the leading edge of the overhang of the Mill. So what I was suggesting that we do, since we're, you know, creating a new property line anyway, is that we sort of establish that right of way relative to the face of the building, like you would for any other building in the MU district, having no more than 10 feet set back from the property line. Thus putting all of that patio space is no longer effectively in the street. It's effectively out in the street. I mean, it's semantic. It's a paper. It's a fictional property. It's, you know, it doesn't matter. It doesn't change how the space is used. It doesn't change even the ownership of the space, per se. It just changes the delineation such that the drop, the road is no longer into the deck of the Mill. That diagonal, you could argue, it's not necessary. It's not, not necessary. It's, you know, either way. So what I had done in a series of emails with, with the various property owners, Keaton, can you pull up those two color plans I sent?
Sure.
Is I had sketched out effectively what the area of property is that we're talking about. Now, on the, on the Share Street, on the Share property at More Pat, I had it to mention that about nine foot eight, I thought was the width of the patio. I just measured it tonight. It's really more like nine foot two. So we just need to get that surveyed and get verified what the actual line is. But the idea would be to just hit the base of the thing and just work, right? So this is the, oh, not the one, the two that I just sent you with the color.
Oh, those ones. I'm sorry. We had a lot going on this evening.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I sent him like eight emails in the last hour. Because I printed these out, but left them on my office.
Tasted them, sure. Okay.
So the suggestion particularly which regards to the Mill property, so this is the Mill property here. So that, that pink band is that nine foot eight or nine foot two, whatever it is, just running straight up. And then the green triangle is what would happen if we did the 10 foot off the face of the deck porch roof. All told, we're talking about like a 10, like five, 100th of an acre or something. It's a couple of thousand square feet, no matter, 1,400 square feet. So it's not big numbers, but it basically just kind of gets us, it gets our chocolate and their peanut butter out of the mix, right? It also gives, in the case of More Pat, it gives them sidewalk frontage so that they're no longer violating New York State alcohol law. Open container lock gives Share, you know, control of that property so that if they wanted to do something to that in the future, they don't have to come to the board first, ask permission to amend the license agreement, then go to the planning board and all that stuff. So it's really just sort of cleaning it up. And that's, that's sort of the discussion on the table.
Just a question real quickly. Does the fact that the, if your property is actually owned by someone else, create any problems for us in doing this?
Only the same guy own all that property?
So Share and More Pat are a single property right now, and it's owned by the, by the doctor.
That's all owned by the doctor.
Okay, right. And so.
He's already been approaching as a man of.
Yeah, he's online tonight, too.
This is Cheryl Green. I'm counsel for Dr. Sheriff. So he, he's agreeable and consent to what's being proposed right now. So we would, we would work with our existing tenants on this.
Okay, it's good to hear.
Good.
So is there any questions on our side?
I like it. I think it cleans it up.
I, I agree. It, it will probably eliminate a couple of minor problems, as you say, for More Pat is a problem. It gives each one of them a little more flexibility, not a lot, but some. And I don't see how it could be negative for any one of them.
No, makes sense. Yeah, I think we're on agreement.
So is there any questions from the, the property parties involved?
It's like Keaton or Tara and Howard. You can unmute Howard.
I was waiting for permission. I'm so used to Zoom meeting. Kindergarten class. The green is that not something that you're then going to add in? Or I just wondered, which is the rest of that property? That's what I was curious about, so.
I personally think the green is a good idea.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, again, it's, we're just moving paper lines in space. So it's not like it's, you know, you go one way or the other. But one thing I will say, Howard, is it doesn't actually encapsulate the parking stalls. One of the, the parking stalls remain outside of either the pink or the green area. Just so you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I knew in discussions from when we did the plaza and we, we put together the license agreement, Howard, you probably remember, but most everybody wasn't on the board except for Baseline at the time. And the reason I think that they, we held back, and Chip, you may remember as well, is the reason we didn't beat it over or sell it at the time was because part of that, if the street ever got converted back to the old way, the plaza went away, then it gave the, the depth that would be needed for a public street again, a full public, traditional street, I guess. So and I don't, I can't tell from this drawing if that would be an issue.
That would remain true.
Right. So this way, it cleaned, basically it cleaned it up, like Matt said. You know, right now, More Pat, when they step out their door to get to their patio, patrons can't really get outside that patio without our permission, our permission, and it's just red tape. I guess it could also create liability potentially for the village. You know, should somebody fall in that, I mean, it just, it could get muddy, right? So this just cleans everything up. And then there's no license agreement that's ever required by our future board. And there's nothing the village can do with that property anyway. So it's, that's the beauty of an old village is minds are wonky, so. So that's kind of what we're proposing.
You gotta admit Chip was talented.
Yeah, it's, there's a delay on this. I admitted about this.
Okay, so it sounds like the board is in agreement. All five of us are in agreement that this is a good idea to move forward. So the next step then would be what?
So I think, you know, I think the last part of it was that basically what the previous board had basically said, or the discussion was, and Joel, you can recall this, was that the village just didn't need to be, basically born any cost to the village. So transfer of a dollar, basically sell this tiny little parcel for a dollar and that you guys basically cover all of the legal fees in order to transfer that. That way, there's no real cost to the village. And that little bit of land will basically go back on the tax rolls, although it's not going to make a big difference. But still, it, you know, right now, it's not on a tax roll, but it's being used for private use. So that's kind of the, the thought that we were thinking as a board.
Well, but do you any cost now? What, a survey?
Effectively, it would be legal, it would be the, the legal description meets and bounds of the proposed, you know, swap, as well as whatever legal fees to transfer the property, you know, ownership and stuff, which essentially the, the suggestion is, is that that be borne by the, the property owners and that that is effectively the cost of the exchange.
So that's kind of what we were wanting to discuss tonight, to make sure that all parties were good with that, if that's the case. And I don't know if we should consider Chip's time in this, how much Chip will have to do on this work as well. And then should the transfer be whatever Chip estimates amount of hours he'll have to do on our behalf.
Sure, I think Chip, or you can hear us okay?
Yeah, now I can. I'm sorry. I just had to switch over from my phone to my computer. So I was disconnected for a little while, so.
Comment on what trustee Yates just referred to with any costs that would be associated with your time in this transfer of ownership?
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there will be a little bit just to prepare, you know. Well, I mean, it depends how much, you know, if, if the grantees here want to, you know, prepare everything, that will certainly save money for the village. We'll still have to review it. But if we don't have to prepare the survey and the legal description and the deed and everything else, the more that they can prepare, the less it'll cost the village. But there will be some time in, in just reviewing it. But it would be pretty much, should be pretty modest.
Sure. Well, I think that that's acceptable. I mean, we, you know, I can refer back to the conservation easement that we put on the property on South Cayuga. You know, we obviously incurred some costs in reviewing that as well. So I don't think there's any way around that. So I'm fine to proceed in that manner.
Okay, that's good for me. So if you guys, is that kind of you all's plan? To basically do all the, the front work on that and transfer for a dollar?
Yeah, so this is attorney Cheryl Green speaking. So there have obviously been informal discussions between us and our tenants regarding the cost sharing of the fees on the resurvey of the property, getting the legal description mapped out. So, you know, we're, we're happy to, to take the lead on that and then work with Chip.
Okay.
And, and Howard, you, you're good with the green area as well then? Is that marked out?
You know, obviously, our concern was always the parking. So it's not a, you know, it's not a great benefit to us in any way what's going on, but, you know.
Well, I mean, you know, I guess we can entertain an alternative. I mean, these two, these are properties, these are two different, you know, types of. So, I mean, if you want to revisit a fraction of that.
Sorry?
Revisit the dimension of that, we can.
Yeah, no, I understand. And then, you know, I, I guess with the comment that was made earlier about being able to change the purpose of the road back again, I mean, that could always be written into something anyway. I mean, I, I don't know. I just, just absorbing everything, I guess.
Well, so, so for you, Howard, then, you know, the advantage that you're looking for is to absorb the depth of the parking stalls for your property maintenance purposes.
So I guess, yeah, how the other properties will have the ability to run their businesses in a way that makes sense. And I guess be on the sidewalk or outside, we just want to be able to, if something happens to me, like any property owner would, have a marketable property to a potential buyer at some point, you know? Or for my boys, it just, it's just a difficult kind of piece. And I see how even now with that diamond, it's always been unique, you know? It just, that doesn't clear up our issue, but.
Well, okay, so we can put a pin in that and.
Yeah.
Discuss about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, but it sounds like in the meantime, then, the owners of Share and More Pat are on board and we're going to proceed forward with that, correct?
I'm, I'm definitely on board. I've, again, letting Cheryl take the lead as she's representing the actual property owners. But Peter from More Pat and I have had discussions and we're 100% on board with this. The one question I would have is, so I understand kind of where Howard's at as well. If, if it turned out that, say, Howard didn't want to do this, is, is there a possibility of having this just affect the property in front of More Pat and Share? Or does this, is this dependent on the entire stretch?
Yeah, there will be two different pieces of property.
Right, so we proceed forward with the properties in front of Share and More Pat. We would have attorney Green work with attorney Greco on whatever we need to do to get that moving. And then if Mr. Cadmus wants to proceed forward in a different aspect with the versus the green triangle was laid out, you know, we can certainly, you know, have that conversation. But I don't want to hold, I don't want to hold up Share and More Pat. In the meantime, I'd like to, we can move forward with that.
I agree.
Yeah, Howard.
Hi, just the last thing I would say. In each property anyway, because of their legal description and, and the separate deeds, yeah, we wouldn't be holding anybody up. I don't want to step on attorney Green's feet, but I, I do know a little bit about real estate law. So we, we wouldn't screw you up, Joel. But with ours, you know, the last thing I want to say, and I, I didn't want to make the meeting about this, so I'll, I'll make it brief, is just under our agreement with those spaces, we pay so much in insurance. And that's why, you know, it's just difficult with maintaining it and the liability. So that's ultimately where we always stand is just, it's a kind of a sticky thing, you know, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else that we need to discuss while we're all here? Or do we feel like we're in a good spot to move forward? Good, good. Attorney Green, are you good with everything?
Yes, I'm good with everything. It's been discussed. Thank you so much.
Okay.
So Cheryl, then is that, so are you going to then prepare some, some drafts of?
Yeah, we'll have to, obviously, we'll have to get the, you know, we'll have to get the property resurveys first and then I'll just work with you, Chip, so we can move forward with transaction and transfer.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good. S T, too, thank you for drawing all of that out and taking the measurements. And because it really is helpful to try to talk about.
It's really a territory to stand in.
Yeah, it's nice to have somebody who has the, the technical skills to do the drawings and everything. So thanks, Matt.
Okay. All right, we'll move right into correspondence then. Does anyone have any that they'd like to discuss? I know, we just had a few complaints about snow on sidewalks over the past two weeks, but I believe they have been addressed, so. Okay, grants update, Keaton?
Uh, thank you. At this time, not too much report since a couple of weeks ago. The D E C grant that I mentioned was submitted by our grant writers. We're currently in, I believe I mentioned where we are with the LWRP. We're currently in the stage of plotting all of our future projects that go along Eleka Creek. And our next meeting is Wednesday evening. So we invite the public to come on and, you know, see what the meetings are all about. There's actually a whole page dedicated to the LWRP right on our website. You can pull it up right now. It has everything anybody would need to kind of get caught up. Let's just under projects and then waterfront revitalization. And once you click there, you will see all of our summaries dating back to April of 2019 and our waterfront advisory meeting from the 21st. That recording is up there. So we're pretty excited on that, that's of our grants.
Can you, I just forwarded you an email.
Sure.
It's 2021 contact update form regarding the LWRP. Did you send that back? Okay, so we're all set with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I'm simply, I know it's done. Yeah, okay. All right, so that's all I have. Okay, anything else, Greg?
Uh, not at this time.
All right, just with the agenda, we will be, we have nothing listed under executive session, but we will go into executive session tonight to discuss an employee letter to the village board. So just, I want to make note of that, that we'll be doing that. And anyone else have any questions on the agenda before we move forward? Okay, so liaison reports, I'll touch briefly on all of these. The Village Dog Park update, we had discussed that at the budget meeting, the costs associated with that. And I just, I just wanted to reference because I, just so everyone's aware, because I, do you think it was before your time? Hold out, we did a South Lawn park survey result a couple of years back. And the, so I'll just read them in order, the top, you know, presenters of what people wanted at South Lawn Park. Number one was more trees, two was walking paths, three was restroom, restroom facilities, which we now have. The next one, fourth, was a gazebo shelter, and then the next one was a doggy area. It 57 votes for that out of, you know, so I have a copy that's if you're interested in it. So I don't really, I, I know that this board isn't supportive of just outright paying for the park itself. And we're looking at probably about $48,000 due to the fencing costs and primarily the prevailing wage that we have to work with in New York State. But I just wanted to, you know, make note that I, I do believe that there's a strong interest for it. And if we have money in the parks budget, I want to, want to state this issue dial altogether. I'd just like to keep an open discussion on it.
I was still in the middle of thinking. The concept that we use for Island Park going forward, that.
Community dogs.
If we can use a community day where we would have maybe one person from the fence company giving guidance and with the help of the DPW and the volunteers, I think a lot of money could be saved that way. And I know it worked well for the Island Parkers that was there, those two days, watching it happen and helping. But, but anyway, I think a lot of people will be willing to help with this.
Okay, yeah, and it's definitely an idea that I, I'm going to explore. So I'll, you know, kind of leave this on the work session agenda here. And, you know, we can kind of, you know, as a reminder to myself certainly, and I'll give updates as needed. Meeting house transfer of ownership. We did send over the documents to our associates this week. Our associates is the organization that we're retaining to give us a appraisal value for the building. On hoping that it's probably, I'm guessing, about a two to three week turnaround in talking with them initially. So we may even be lucky enough that our next meeting in March to have a number of what that appraisal cost is. Anyone on board have any questions regarding that process or where we're at? Chip, I know you are in the midst of looking and doing a title search. Do you want to just update everyone on where that is?
Um, yeah, so we've ordered the title search to be updated and that's in process. We also, there's another issue with, so when the village took title to that meeting house, there was some unusual deed restrictions in there from the grantor, which is a religious corporation that no longer exists. So we're trying to trace down whether there's a successor entity to that religious corporation that, that we need to see what the status of those, those covenants are. It's actually not even clear that they run with the land. So, but, but at any rate, so we're getting the title updated and we're, and we're trying to run down that issue to determine, because there's a reversionary clause in the deed that could potentially be triggered, although I don't think it will be triggered. But we at least need to see who, if anyone, is the current successor to that religious corporation.
Okay. And I know we are still waiting to hear about from the state. You haven't heard anything about it, correct you? I haven't either, so I'll give them a little bit more time and then I'll, I'll reach out again and see what I can, what I can uncover as well. And if there's no further question, we'll move on. South Cayuga Road Crosswalk. Keaton, can you pull up the drawing that we had done with the crosswalk going straight across Cayuga? So initially, when we began this conversation, we had the engineers draw up two crosswalk forms on the corner of Milton. One was the diagonal one, which we initially discussed. And then there was also one that was, was straight and crossed. So based upon the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting and their comments regarding the dislike for just a diagonal crosswalk. And I, I do think they have some really good points. I think trustee Tori brought up a really good point about where do you stop? You know, when you're in the car, you're driving, you know, it's on a diagonal. It's not really clean, maybe understanding of where exactly you should stop. Maybe understand the where exactly you should stop in your car, right? So I think, you know, hearing what they had to say, I think that this is probably. The better alternative based upon the other two alternatives that were also suggested. The one closer to mainstream that Mr. Spino suggested is, as I spoke with you about Trustee Tori, about the blind. If you're, if you're coming from the municipal lot area and you're trying to cross there, you really are, you know, surrounded by a blind curve there. So I don't think that that's going to be a location that's even viable. The other alternative that we talked about was in front of eighty six South Pino, which is further down. And my concern with that is that you're not really going to capture the true traffic pattern of people. Who are coming up from Milton Street, which would be a connector to South Lawn Park. We have memory trail. So in in all essence, I think that this may be, in fact, the best area for a crosswalk. And I'm interested in hearing board members' comments on this because I'd like Trustee Tori to take this back to the next Traffic and Safety meeting along with our comments. So feel free to jump in.
For a lot of the same reasons I agree with that location. And certainly the diagonal one was was would have endangered for walkers.
Okay. Trustee.
I I agree that I like the ninety three better. My only reservation to this location is the sidewalk slopes that were required to.
Sure, which which though are within our idea. Well, sure, with the percentage of the height according to Ben and the engineer. Or if they were within the percentage, they were, they were. Why do you have to do a dip?
Well, the tip will have to happen when you want, but the problem is it's like seven point eight percent. Which is more than five.
Right, I thought Ben said, we, because you brought this up at the last meeting and Ben corrected you, I believe it was eight something, like eight point two or something.
As was required for a handicap ramp with railings, anything but. That's that's the limit for handicap ramp. That's the steepest it can be down the shelves. Five percent is the steepest you can do a handrail. So.
I can't challenge that because I don't know enough.
That's, so that's, that's my, my comment back to the the village engineer to verify.
To verify.
That that slope is correct. I, and this, it isn't odd because the building code in New York State is not expressly applied to. Public right of way as opposed to private construction. But, you know, five percent is generally considered the steepest that a sidewalk should be in the direction of path of travel. And it's currently steeper, though I do believe there is, and there is potentially enough horizontal length to make up the difference. So.
Okay, yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the percentage. You would know more about that than I do, so.
That's why I favored the crosswalk at eighty six because it did not have that steep incline.
Yeah, and right, and I agree with you. It is a better, you know, as far as not having a steep incline, but I just, I guess, I would argue that I don't really. At that point, think it's going to be used enough that it is, so my my conclusion, so where I'm at with this. Is that I feel that this would be the ideal location to expend funds to put in a crosswalk on South Caugee. If we're looking to put it in another location such as eighty six or closer up to Main Street. I would say I would not want to spend the funds to put a crosswalk at this time because I don't feel as though putting in either of those locations. Would be a greater benefit and warrant the expenditure of it. So, so that's where I'm at with it. And that's why I wanted to go to Traffic and Safety because I'm, you know, curious as to what they'll say about this design.
Are railings, if needed, acceptable? Well, sure, that, and and that's fine. The issue with railings in the public right of way is that they're expensive, their maintenance are. You know, but they're perfectly doable. I mean, it wouldn't, it's not, wouldn't be more than a pipe rail.
Right.
You know, and it would only have to be on one side. It's, you know, it's a satisfactory thing. The the issue is that we would have to have it because unless the, unless they can mitigate the sidewalk slope. At least on one side, like, for instance, the south end here, it appears that there's some horizontal distance before you get to the driveway curb cut. So they could stretch that and soften this slope. But on the north side, can you just pan down just a little bit so I can see the top of the page? Yeah, on the north side, they're already at the drop. So you really can't make, without redoing the curb cut too. You can't really soften the sidewalk. So if they could mitigate half of it to five percent, and the other half they could curcurly. But if they can't mitigate either half, then both would require it, which is fine. I mean, it's, it's been done. It's just, it will add costs to the project and it will add long-term maintenance for these, these things will rust. You know, you, or it gets hit with the sidewalk.
Okay, well, and I, and those are all good points that being, that I don't have your expertise and background. You know, things do, and that's why we're going to defer to Traffic and Safety and certainly I can have Ben check with our engineer as well on that. To, you know, verify that grade.
Could I have that before the next meeting?
Yeah, when is your next meeting?
Uh, on the fourth, next Thursday.
March fourth?
Yeah, okay, because it would make more sense if I could explain that.
So, do you have this one?
I don't, we never had that. And then the percentage of the grade with that would.
Right, right, okay, so I can get all that over to you before then. Okay, Trustee Gates, do you have any comments on this?
No, I'm in support on this side of Milton, mainly because if we put it over to what would be the south side of Milton. I don't know that people would use it as much because I think probably most of the users are going to come off of Milton from the church. Or people parking during events in the summertime, they'll park down Milton, so they're gonna, they're basically headed back towards Main Street. So I I think it's the same effect we see sometimes with the hot signal is that if people have to walk out of the way to use it. They're just going to cross and not use it at all. So I think this is probably the best solution, in my opinion.
Trustee Tor, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, I heard all comments and I'll bring it to the Traffic and Safety and. Either is good, in my opinion. I'm happy with either, so we'll just take it from there.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'll I'll make sure we get all the information we have over to you before that meeting. Perfect. Thank you.
One, just one other idea. This is supposed to be a school property, but this is private.
Right.
The two curb cuts that are creating pinch point for us are both theirs. Whereas it is unusual for one property to have two driveways. And there's no need for them to have the driveway that's at the intersection. But it's a, it's a mess.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's one thing, like along Main Street, we did our best to get rid of excess driveways.
It's a weird driving, too, when you look at it. It's weird to have driveways.
I mean, we have the.
That's not the one where the user can turn around.
Chip, do we have the right? Did you hear Basil's question?
Did you have, do you have the right, did you say? Sorry, I'm not hearing everything.
I'm sorry, Basil, do you want to ask that question?
Do we have the, do we have the right to demand that they remove that driveway?
Oh, uh, well, that's a good question. Do they, do they have, is it their only driveway?
They have two. So they have the one there to the right of the pole and then over towards the left?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, it's already there. Can we, you know what? On Basil, I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to have to take a look to see what. Our coach says about that.
My guess is.
Curb cuts do not begin.
Well, no, but the driveway, well, no, but the driveway is there and the curb cut's there because the driveway is there. I'm just saying that, you know.
I mean, is there really, you said narrow those driveways there, or is it my imagination?
They're very narrow.
That's why they probably have two. You enter one way, you exit the other.
Yeah, I mean, it probably, I don't, the driveway may not meet the current. I mean, obviously, those driveways are old. Yeah, I don't, you know, I'm going to really have to take a look at that. They they may have, but it's been there for so long, frankly, they may have acquired. You know, a property right in that, that, that we may not be able to interfere with. You know, I I'm just going to have to take a look at that issue.
You know what, even before going to that, that extent, is it possible that they don't even use that driveway?
I don't know. It's a simple enough ask to say like, is this, when this meeting begins?
Right, yeah, I mean, obviously, if they were willing to abandon it and take it out, you know, certainly do that.
Well, who would do asking of that? Who who would ask that question to the property owner? Would you, is, you know, would you write up that letter as our village attorney or?
I, I don't, I can, but I don't think it's necessary that it come from your attorney.
It could be, if you want me to. It could be an ask from you, Deb, or anybody on the board could reach out to the property owner to ask them, you know. Because I think what we did sometimes on Main Street was because we were trying to clean up all the curb cuts was we removed. You know, since it would be during a project, if we remove the stuff that's in the right of way, the old driveway. At least they don't really bear any cost, and then we correct the curb cut and remove the curb cut. And then it's, it's all cleaned up because then it may give us more space in order to meet the the slope demands that Matt's concerned about.
I'd stop there if you wanted to.
No, we can. I don't know if there's anyone actually living in the building, so I don't know if, again, anyone would answer the door. We can, we can draft a letter and send it over.
All right. I'm going to inquire.
Yeah, I mean, you 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 may just want, before you do that, well, I mean, there's no harm in doing it, but it, I'm going to take a look, though, anyway, to know what are. Try to determine whether we have the right.
Okay.
To say, you know. We're, you know, we're got, we have to eliminate one of these curb cuts.
Yeah. It would be nice to start with the conversation, you know, to say we're working on this project and one of these being out of the way would help. This project be more ADA compliant.
Okay, well, well.
So is that a private residence now?
Yeah.
It is a private residence. It's under, who owns that? It's on the, what's that? No, 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 that's on the Garetsland, third one now. It's architectural, it's, it was on the survey map when I, because I did send letters to that property owner. About the crosswalk going in, in front of their property. So it was an architectural, something or another company that was listed as the owner of that property.
Yeah, I think it transferred a couple of years ago, and I thought somebody was planning to make it really into a home, a livable home. I don't know if somebody from HPC remembers, we may want to reach out. I want to say Mary Loether may know the story on that, when it transferred, because I think they came to HPC several years ago. About what they wanted to do, because I believe that is on the National Historic Registry and obviously a local landmark prize.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I I certainly don't mind sending a letter over, but it will be a very polite, soft-esque letter. And I don't really, you know, feel comfortable demanding someone give up on.
I, I don't think we should be doing anything. It's exactly what you should be doing.
Yeah, okay.
What do you think about this?
Yeah, okay. All right, well, that's what, that's the direction we'll go then, but in the meantime, I do, I do want to just have a discussion. Be informational with Traffic and Safety. All right, those rural slaughter issue and the town development, Matt, do you want to?
Sure, so I, we were able to get our hands on Passero's engineering drawings for the town development. I sketched out digitally a proposed easement that routed through from the backyards along. What's the other street? Pasadena?
Pasadena.
Those roads. So from, starting, starting in the east there, back to their property along the rear yards of those rovers. Through to California and across to California, and then snaking through over the high trails. Thumbs up. So I forwarded that illustration, fully dimensioned, over to Chip, who ordered it up to his real estate colleague. And Chip's going to tell me that he got feedback. Or not.
I, you know, I, I, I do not yet have feedback from Vince on, on that. I don't know if he's had a chance to look at that yet. I actually spoke to him today about the meeting house, and I apologize, I forgot to ask him about where he was. I'm looking at that, but I will check on that tomorrow.
Good, yeah, so basically, it's just a. Heard of Ben as well. The layout is somewhat irregular. It didn't, when Passero reengineered the waterline, the storm line. To receive the runoff of those roles. It did, they didn't really make an effort to sort of establish a storm sewer that was ours. They just basically upsized it to receive, well, stuff's coming into it from all directions, it's angled all over the place. So, so the layout that I created is something that's easier to describe, more left linear, straight lines. But their waterline, you know, jigs and jogs inside it. And, you know, Ben's slightly concerned about the ten foot width, feels it's a little narrow. But it's snake by by those buildings, between buildings, and it can't get higher in a lot of places. The truth is. We're probably, I mean, there's very few instances that I can envision where we're getting to give access to this. You know. If it's a cleaning out issue, it's a maintenance issue for the property owner anyway. They've got a million manholes there, they can easily clean all this stuff out. If there's some sort of subsstandard, you know, if it's not draining or something. It's going to start with them, and the likelihood that we're going to have to put a shovel in there ever is pretty small. So, but on the other hand, the day.
Yeah, which is, which is, I think, peace of mind for all those residents that were having water issues over those rovers. So I'm I'm happy that it's going to be in play. Thank you for doing that. And thank you, Chip. Okay, that's all I have. So, Dr. Mayor Fiazma, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing major. We did have a meeting with the agriculture last week and. We talked about a few of the things that the population might be doing in the future. I'm not going to go into detail, but, you know, that's. That'll, that'll be their thing. Most, most likely, even though the art festival group is now independent of the village. I would suspect that a lot of people on the agriculture committee will be acting as volunteers on that event anyway. And and that's what we, that's what we discussed. But essentially, there's not a lot yet in in our world as far as they're they're concerned. We're still lacking a a chairperson, so I'm going to reach out to individuals because, based on a general. Request, I'm not getting any reactions. So I know one or one. We'll, we'll have a chairperson in the future.
Okay.
That's it.
Great. Trustee, too?
Uh, so first thing here was the park and study. I'd love to have a narrative to share with everybody, but unfortunately. Uh, the dog ate my homework and. So I gotta start over with that one.
Good point, Keith. Let's talk about if we had a dog.
So updates on the community plan, zoning for, zoning code, the RFP, it's out in the world, it's due. We're due to receive responses much better, that's a week from Friday. Haven't seen a lot of chatter about that since, you know, our first hit the cypher world, so.
Yeah, I might, I'll put out another update.
Yeah.
Ma- Matt, just, I I told Matt about this on Friday, but I, just for the rest of the board's. Uh, information, Dan Howard from the Town Planning Department did leave me a message on Friday afternoon. I was in a deposition, but reaching out because he saw that that RFP had been hosted. And just wanted to touch base to see what other. w- whether we were looking for the town's assistance at all with respect to that, or a role for the Town Planning Department to play in that. So I, uh, talked to Matt a little bit about that, and, uh, well, I'll be reaching back out to to Dan to see, you know, what they have in mind, what they think that they can bring to it, and and how that might work if they wanna, if they wanna participate and help on that process. But they certainly did in the last time round, and, um, you know, obviously, I think they've got some valuable expertise to bring on these sorts of activities. But I haven't yet had a chance to talk to Dan about that.
Yeah, so. When I wrote the RFP, I did want to presume that Townhampers, you know, was available to throw manpower at this effort. So it's it's sort of crafted the way that we're doing it now. But the more, the more we can glean from the Townhampers' benefits and the planning department that came from their expertise and knowledge, the more the better.
Dan was pretty involved last time around. And and I I would suspect he'd be one, um, maybe, maybe he is, you know, maybe he himself or someone on the staff.
Yeah, I mean, the the last time he was, he was kind of the town's liaison or whatever, participant in that process. Of course, he was in a different role then, because he was, he wasn't running the planning department the way he is now. Because Gary was still there, but, um, so I don't know, again, I don't know whether Dan would personally, or maybe he can assign somebody again. He 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 just, he reached out, left a message, but I didn't, I I was tied up in something else on Friday when he called. So Ma- Matt and or I, you know, will reach back out to him this week and and sort of start that discussion and see, see how that might, how that might work, but o- obviously, that, as I said, I think they've got some valuable resources that we wouldn't want to leave on the table if it's being offered.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Last gate code is something saying, but, um, the structure code. I hold in my hot little hands the first first draft of what is.
A structure.
Yes. What is essentially brand new chapter fifteen, which is a, a, uh, reorganization and consolidation of chapters twelve, fifteen, twenty-five, twenty-eight, seventy-two, and one hundred and twelve. All into one, all encompassing. This is hard.
Yeah, this computer.
With a handful of new definitions and things to clarify. And then all of it is under the one headache, so that it's a one-stop shop for our code enforcement as far as.
For.
Literally every playground that you could climb on.
Playhouses, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, great. When when will we be able to view that?
That is a great question, um, on page four.
So you want to view it first and then you.
Yeah.
Is there something that?
I, yeah, so I, what I suggested to Matt.
Oh, he already has a copy too, so the the three of the, I I'm reading through it, proofreading through it, Tim's gonna proofread through it. We're, uh, Chip and Tim and I are gonna set up something next week to have kind of a powwow on what we found, and then presumably coming out the end of that would be the first draft.
Okay.
And I know you're gonna read up your work.
Is there a Cliff's Notes version?
There, this is the Cliff's.
Cool, put that all together?
Chip.
Awesome. All right, well, I can't wait to see it. I'm excited. There's probably gonna be a much more streamlined way of dealing with all of those.
That's, that's the goal.
Trustee Tori, you're up. Okay, well, I'm happy to report that, uh, Chairman Peter Warren made a new selection to fill a vacancy on the Glen Park Joint Board. And, uh, he, yeah, he was clever. We had a lot of applicants still from the summer, or actually from when it was September. Big, yeah, volunteers, and he sent out a questionnaire to each and everyone to make sure they knew, you know, you had to be, there was a time constraint, were you available to work at the park, you know, hands-on and whatnot. And, uh, most answered, and, uh, we chose, uh, Mr. Paul J. Glaber as our new committee member. So we're happy to have him on board.
Okay, is he a town appointment or?
No, village.
Okay.
Village, yes, he's. He lives on Hillside Drive, and, um, he and his wife are personal friends of mine. And they're wonderful, and they they just moved to the village less than two years ago, and they're very excited to be part of the village and help out.
That's great.
So that's good, and then old biz, oh, no, Earth Day, we have, uh, good news that I did hear back from Dare to Repair Cafe, the gentleman who heads that, who's also runs the tool library. It appears that, um, most people he asked are on board to hold a Dare to Repair Cafe on Earth Day.
Okay.
And right now, he had, uh, six, six committed people, all are, it appears to be, um, retirees, and he will make sure that it's all COVID-safe, you know, with hands sanitizer and whatnot. And he perhaps would even do a per appointment type deal, but, um, he's on board now, and we're all set, so I'm excited.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very excited for that. And besides that, um, old business, um, nothing new on No Pavilion and, or the Section House. We talked about that during our, you don't want to bring that up again, do you?
Section House.
Yeah. Well, yeah, with the exterior.
I I'm just a little like alarmed that it's such an issue with asbestos, that we know that.
We knew the exterior was asbestos. I I, um, I think the the new information now was that was so true, the difficulty of.
Because it's below the stucco, right?
So just encapsulate that whole building?
Is it, is it cementatious, or is it?
That's what I would guess as well.
I am not by any stretch an asbestos expert, but it is, the rules are different when they're outside versus inside. But, you know, I would think they were probably attempted probably one side at a time to remove.
And and where we think we're gonna get the funding for that, is that something we're just gonna wait as we get?
Should.
I'm gendered.
That's where we go.
We're hoping, but no guarantees, right?
Oh, yeah.
Exterior.
That's okay.
That's, that's good.
Has funds, we can ask them.
Okay.
Because a lot of times you can use CBD as the match.
Okay, oh, that'd be good.
Yes.
So. All right, ask. Good. That's it for me.
You know.
I'm coming, yep. Um, yeah, the the Village Garden Walk, um, there's nothing really more on that, but.
Thank you.
Good?
Hang on.
You hear me okay?
You know what? I forgot. Can anybody have a chance to look at these bylaws that Pete Warren created?
Matt?
Yep.
Okay, have the agreement, and, um, I don't know. Chip's gonna get to see, I mean, a lot of that stuff is like, a little bit, um, I want to be in control and I want people to do what I say kind of thing, but it's not for me to say. We'll wait and see what, um.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Legally, I don't know that it, that's something they can even do since we have the agreement, because the agreement does list in there the role of on Park Joint Board.
Well, why does Pete feel the need for this? Because I I took a look at it and.
Well, this is something he wants to give to every member to follow.
Yeah.
And he just wrote it up as a convenience to pass out.
As a charter's.
Yeah.
You might need rephrasing, like, rather than bylaws, just an, uh, an agreement for members or something like that. I don't know, if you want to rank it as as the bylaws of the organization.
We could do that. That makes sense.
I mean, it's definitely, he's definitely calling for a stronger commitment from the members of the board. So like, in addition to active participation in meeting, other members are expected to actively participate in work sessions in the park, and should be expected to take on at least one other assigned task or responsibility each year. So, right, but I I guess so, I mean, and and this could go both ways. I mean, you could get a board who takes this and absolutely wants to follow it, but you can also get members who are maybe interested in participating in the board meetings, but they don't necessarily want to be.
Maybe we should just call them guidelines.
I, guidelines is probably a better word than bylaws, okay?
Um, we'll just change it to guidelines.
I mean, it's definitely softer, but I think too, you know, it is just, it's a recommending board, it's not.
I I understand, but.
You understand that, I know, so, um, I mean, they can always certainly make recommendations, but I, you know, I think that, um.
Well, I'll I'll talk to Pete, and we'll just change it to.
Well, that's interesting too, because I, I mean, like, when I was chairman, I tried to, it's an interesting dynamic, because the the committee does kind of vacillate between like active versus sort of regulatory, right? It depends on the mix, and I tried to make them active, and they're like, oh, no, we're regulatory. I was a wrong group at the wrong time, so.
Which is why you were the one installing the ceiling fan, and and we all.
And and doing all the gardening, yes, exactly, yep.
Um, so, okay, well, good, well, I I, you know, I do commend his efforts for trying to, you know, to to do this, so.
So we call them guidelines, Chip doesn't have to review them, right?
No, you just.
Still does.
He's still guideline, too, just because it's part, because we have the joint charter.
You have to be careful of what you tell people.
Right.
So, yeah, they would still have to.
I understand, yeah, it's.
That's where yours was the worst.
Yeah. You can't just tell people that.
All right, trustee Yates, you're up.
Okay, um, yeah, there were some technical issues. I don't think there's really anything more we have to discuss with the Village Garden Walk. Um, I think we agreed as a board that, you know, depending on what the state says in July when this would occur, that we can revisit it at that point, but for now, there's no need to cancel it at this point. And I think we all felt that it should be safe by that point, because it would be outside and you can socially distance. So, um, I think, you know, we just have to keep an eye on it, or I'll say, you guys will have to keep an eye on it where we are as we get closer.
Yeah, I think we'll be perfectly fine with it, so we'll just proceed forward in that manner.
Okay, all right. Um, the other two are just, we'll leave them there as discussions. I think the tree board is still putting together a list for Union Road, the West Side, um, and the Holiday Lights, um, that's something you guys can discuss further in the future, um, if that's something we're gonna do. Um, we didn't bring it up at WBA, um, so maybe next month's meeting, Keaton and I can discuss with, uh, WBA regarding the Christmas tree lights in the main corridor.
Sure, yeah, I think at at that point, they might be a little bit more, um, ready to listen to, you know, uh, ideas from us. They just weren't, weren't really, uh, I mean, they're just getting back into things, really, you know, so.
Yeah, well, and they have, I mean, because everybody's, you know, attached to their business understandably. Apparently, um, the 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 membership, uh, attendees, or the attendance has been light. Um, so it would be nice to have a a more fuller board and attendance, so hopefully in the near future, that will come to fruit. So, so that's all I have.
Okay, um, attorney Brecko? Do you have anything to report?
Not, no, not, nothing other than the things we already discussed.
Okay. Minister Yerkindr? Uh, Mr. De Priest?
I only have a couple of brief things, um, with the, uh, upcoming budget season, we'll call it, uh, which is, uh, now in full swing. I wanted to make sure that the public was aware that we'll be doing, uh, everything we can to get the, uh, um, budget details out there, and this is what we did last year. And, you know, it came out, came out really well. So I plan on doing something very similar this year, includes a a budget message from the mayor, your three main things that you, as a taxpayer, really care about, your budget levy and rate, and then just some briefs, um, stating maybe some facts about this year's budget. And, um, also a way for people to provide feedback, since we're not at full capacity here because of the pandemic. Um, we'll we'll keep these, um, feedback rules this year again, um, and we'll allow people to, uh, you know, email, uh, call us, um, you know, a- and then their, their remarks, their concerns, whatever they might have, uh, go directly to the board, uh, for for your guys' review before the the final vote.
Okay, that's a good idea this year.
Okay, yeah, sounds always good.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this will be out there, uh, Village Hall is open now, so I, you know, last year I didn't print out any. So this year we'll be able to print out some, it'll be nice, you know, people can, you know, stop in and get them, and, you know, also put it out there, uh, you know, through our our newsletter, um, uh, email addresses, and, uh, also on on Facebook, Twitter, all that.
Good.
So, all right?
Yep.
And that's all I had, so.
Okay, all right, so.
Just curious, essentially, is that what you kind of gave to the V also?
Pretty much, yeah, I mean, you know, um, you know, the the newspapers, they always care about, like I said, the big three at the top there, um, and and then the rest, you know, what went up, what went down, uh, but, yeah, pretty much, that's pretty much what I gave to the V.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we are done unusually early with our work session then, so we will take a fifteen-minute recess and we'll reconvene at seven thirty for our board meeting. Okay? All right, thank you.
Deputy Julie? Deputy Julie?
All right. Okay, I think we're back online, we'll get started. I want to welcome everyone to the Village of Williamsville Board Meeting for February twenty second. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. De Priest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. We are the republic which stands my nation. Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Administrator Kendron, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Piazza.
Here.
Trustee Yates.
Here.
Trustee Eto'o.
Here.
Trustee Torrey.
Here.
Attorney Brecko.
Here via Zoom.
DPW General Curchie Villanen. Deputy Treasurer Pasco.
Here.
Director of Community Development, De Priest.
Here.
Okay, uh, we have no proclamations this evening. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting held on February eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so I will make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So if there's anyone who is on our Zoom call tonight, who has a question or a comment pertaining to Village of Williamsville, uh, please state your name and address, and we'll let you speak.
Right now, we only have, uh, one person on from the community. Larry Zizowski, if you, if you'd like to talk, please, uh, you know, please speak to the board and identify yourself.
Good evening, Larry Z here, I, no complaints, everybody's doing fine, thank you.
Hey Larry. Thanks Larry.
Can we get that recorded verbatim?
Just push a button.
Just to play it every meeting.
Every meeting, all right. Well, I will make, uh, note then to, uh, close the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, getting into reports and resolutions. Um, I will make a motion to move resolutions number one and number two. They cover either budget transfers or payroll and vouchers as they appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number three, um, we had put in here initially, in the event that we needed to override the tax cap. We had our budget meeting this past Saturday, and, uh, we came to the conclusion that we will not need to override this year's village tax cap. So I will not be reading or putting forth this resolution, um, tonight as it appears on the agenda, so. I'll just strike that one. At this time, I do have to make a motion to go off agenda for a resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this resolution that I'm reading, um, that I will be reading regarding, uh, publishing a notice for a public hearing for the budget. So resolve that the village administrator is hereby authorized to publish legal notice of a public hearing to be held by the village board trustees at seven thirty PM on Monday, March twenty second, twenty twenty one, at Village Hall, fifty five sixty five Main Street, Williamsville, New York. And via zoom.com, information to be included in notice for the purpose of hearing all persons interested in expressing an opinion on the proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two village budget, which includes the following. General Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund, Glen Park Activities Fund, Debt Service Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to return to regular agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, I have no reports this evening, so I will move over to Deputy Mayor Piazza for his reports and resolutions.
And I have no, this report has been, well, I reset. Uh, so I'll go to my resolution. Resolve that the village board of trustees hereby approves the volunteer firefighter service award program list. Allow twenty twenty ECHA volunteer firefighters for the Village of Williamsville, and hereby authorize as the mayor to sign the authorization for Penflex Incorporated to use the data submitted for the twenty twenty records.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Okay, next for his reports and resolutions is trustee Eto'o.
I have no resolutions this evening, uh, as far as reports, I'll just remind everybody that, uh, Spark Preservation Commission meets tomorrow night. Parks Committee meets, uh, March tenth. Uh, there is a planning board meeting March first, and theoretically a zoning board meeting on March twenty seventh. And that's all I got.
Okay, um, for a question on the Parks Committee meeting. Uh, you know, we had talked a little bit at the budget meeting about what we want to, um, see those, where we want to see those parks funds go to. So I'm assuming that will be like a hot topic of discussion. And, uh, hopefully we can come to some kind of direction as to.
Yes, agreed, yep.
Okay.
And also, the other thing is, um, hopefully, uh, um, there will be, uh, a presentation about, um, splash pads as well.
Ooh, nice.
Okay. The, uh, I would also just maybe note, obviously, that, that we, the board was really, um, strongly in favor of a pavilion, a shelter over at South Lawn Park.
Yep.
In their time, okay, all right, great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next for his reports and resolutions is trustee Yates.
Thank you, mayor, um, I don't have any resolutions tonight and really no updates, um, other than what we just discussed regarding the, uh, Garden Walk, and hopefully that will proceed forward, um, thinking positive to the future. Um, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Next for her reports and resolutions is trustee Torrey.
Thank you, mayor, uh, my reports, I will follow suit.
Thank you, Mayor. My reports, I will follow suit with Mr. Eto'o. We have tentatively a Glen Park Joint Board meeting set for March 2nd at 7:00 PM, and a traffic and safety meeting March 4th at 7:00 PM. And our resolution for today will be that resolve that Paul J. Glouber, residing at 52 Hillside Drive, Williamsville, is hereby appointed to Glen Park Joint Board through the end of the 2020/2021 official village year to fulfill the term that has been vacated by Richard Sweeney.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the board, Mr. Glouber.
Welcome, Mr. Glouber.
Mr. Glouber for the altar.
And that's all I have to do.
Okay, staff reports, I think we touched base on everyone earlier, so unless there's anyone who has anything else to add, we'll pass that. Anyone? Okay, so as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we do have something to discuss into executive session. So Mr. Dupree is going to break out those of us who need to be in the executive session. And we are going into executive session to discuss an employee letter to the village board. So I'll make a motion to go into that executive session at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on just a minute, and I'll get you the breakout room. This is different because I've never done a breakout room with a lot of people in one room.
Always. Pretty much always in Dallas, Paul.
Do you? Now, I'm very glad. I was wondering if you could. Are you in a hotel, Ann?
No, I was still at the office. I was finishing up a meeting. We're getting prepared, so I just stayed at the office and logged in.
Oh, obviously.
So Keaton, are, are, are we in the breakout room?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so my, my colleague Ryan is going to be joining too, so can you bring her into the breakout room when she gets on?
And so.
She's connecting right now.
Hi, Ryan.
Okay, you should all have access now.
Hello.
No.
It says recording is on top.
It didn't pop up like it did last time to break out.
Okay, open all rooms.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Bye bye.
Okay, so I will make a motion to return to the regular board meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you everyone, have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks Al, bye.